Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. We want to thank each of you for being here. It's always a pleasure to have a large group here voicing their opinions and letting us know what they think about the things that are going on in Davie County and talking about the great things that are going on in Davie County. So, we want to now call up for our invocation Pastor Jack Lipsy, the Minister of Jericho, Church of Christ.
Well, let me first say thank you to the Commissioners for the invitation. I'm very happy to be here and happy to be a part of this great county. It is important for us to all remember, as Paul says to the Corinthians, 1 Corinthians Chapter 10, that whatever you do, do all to the glory of God. And so, I know that you have a tremendous responsibility here, and I know that each of you are looking to do just that. Thank you to everybody who is here, who takes such an interest in this community, and just certainly happy to be a part. Let's bow in prayer. Our Almighty Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening, and we are grateful. We're grateful for the love that you shower upon us. We're grateful for that love being demonstrated on the cross in your Son. We are grateful, Father, that we can be here this evening, as we gather together to discuss issues that are certainly important. We pray that as we enter into this new year, that your love would continue to shine forth, that your heart would be seen in each and every person. We ask, Father, that we would all do things to your glory. We pray that you would be with the Commissioners as they enter into this new year, no doubt with difficult decisions, but, Father, we pray that your wisdom would guide them in all that they do. We pray, Father, that we, wherever we might be found, can shine your light, so that others can see that light and be led to you, so that we can glorify you in all things. We ask, Father, that you would be with so many people who are hurting and who are struggling, many who are in this community and in this county. We pray not only decisions that are made here, but each individual decision that we make each day would be for their betterment, would it be to help them. Father, again, ultimately, that it would lead them into a relationship with you through your Son. And so, as we all look into this new year, help us to each individually figure out what we can do to glorify you in all things. We again thank you, Father. We thank you for the grace and the mercy that you shower upon us, understanding that we do not deserve it. Father, that is the tremendous extent of your love. Thank you, Father, and it's in your Son's most holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor, thank you, and thank you for the service of your church to the community. Thank you. Now, to lead us in the pledge will be Mr. Thomas O'Brien. And just a brief word about our veterans that we bring in, who grace us with doing the pledge or leading us in the pledge. Mr. O'Brien is a veteran of the U.S. Army. He attended West Point U.S. Military Academy in 1976 after graduation from high school. He was commissioned as a second lieutenant in May 1980. He attended flight school at Fort Rucker, Alabama, and then served in West Germany from February 1982 until July 1986 as a maintenance test pilot and aircraft maintenance officer. Mr. O'Brien flew the HUH-1H Huey, the OH-58 Kiowa, and the HUH-60 Blackhawk. He went on to serve in Korea from February 1987 until 1988. He served in Corpus Christi at the Army Depot from 1988 to 1991. He met his bride while they were both serving in the military. After Mr. O'Brien left service, he started his career in the packaging and recycling industry. He now serves as the commander of the VFW Post 8719 in Advance. Thank you for being here today. If you'll lead us in the pledge. Yes, sir. Yes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You're welcome to say a word if you'd like.
Thank you for the opportunity to lead the pledge allegiance today. My wife and I have been here for 19 years, and Davie County is a fantastic place to live.
Wow.
We could probably live anywhere we'd want to in the world, and it's well we've chosen. So, thank you to all of you. I know everyone does their part to make it the great place it is.
We thank you for being here, and we thank you for your service. Ethics and conflict disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant North Carolina General Statute 168-86, the Davie County Board of Commissioners Code of Ethics adopted December 2nd, 2019. I would ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda, which will come before you tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up and let the board know at this time before the agenda is adopted. Seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Now, we will adopt the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So may.
Ms. Finney, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Reniker, any discussion? All in favor, uplifted hand. Okay. That's unanimous. Public comment period, Mr. Vogler.
Thank you. Public comment rules, there is several. I'll go over the highlights of those. A speaker is allowed three minutes to speak, and she'll immediately stop when his or her three minutes are up. I am the timer, as designated by the board, and I'll be holding up cards where two minutes remain and one minute remain, 30 seconds remain, and it's when time for you to stop. The board shall be, I mean, the speaker shall address the board as a whole, and shall not ask any verbal exchanges between the board or any questions to a board member individually. Now, all comments shall be verbal. Speaker shall make presentations from the podium, which is right up here, and when you come forward, you will need to state your name for the board, so that our clerk can get that in the minutes. At this time, I have one individual who has signed up. Jennifer Riddle, if you could come forward, please.
Ready?
Yeah, state your name, please.
I am Jennifer Riddle, and my husband, Arnie Riddle, and I have, we live at 1640 Farmington Road. I've been a Davie County resident for 16 years, and Arnie's family has been here for 250 years. We want to be sure that you're aware that you're in default of a legal settlement agreement between the State of North Carolina, Davie County, and Arnie and me. There's no need to rehash the horrific events which began in February 22 and which this notebook records. Year five of this negative experience begins in February of this year. Suffice it to say that we are decent, law-abiding, community-minded, tax-paying residents who have a signed settlement agreement, and the State of North Carolina and Davie County are now nearly four months past the agreed-upon 60-day settlement period. All total, it's been seven months since Arnie and I signed this settlement agreement, and it's been nearly six months since it was signed on July 20 by County Manager Brian Barnett and Virginia Niehaus, who signed for the Director of DPH, Susan Cisagra. County Attorney Ed Vogler knows this because our attorney has talked to him about it, and Mr. Vogler's suggestion has been that we should pursue the state and Davie County by pushing this issue to the North Carolina Industrial Commission. That was a very uncaring and disappointing response from a fellow Davie County resident. In case you're not familiar with the Industrial Commission, it comprises attorneys who are paid by the State of North Carolina. We have been told it will take a minimum of $50,000 to push our case to the commission, and that we probably would not see any positive results by doing so. We do not have the physical stress-bearing or financial means to take this ridiculous issue to the commission, nor should we have to do that. The State of North Carolina and Davie County generated this sorry settlement agreement, which we agreed to because we wanted to bring this to a close, this repugnant chapter of our lives. As stipulated by the state and county in the settlement agreement, we should have received the settlement check by September 20, 2023. We still do not have a check. We believe that if you, our county Commissioners, actually care about us, your fellow Davie County residents, you will do the right thing and tell John Barkley in the Attorney General's office, that would be Josh Stein's office, to do the right thing and process our settlement check, so we can bring this issue to a close. Thank you. Do I go sit down? Thank you.
And I will say this, we've been in contact with John's office several times, and every time that we have been in contact with him, there's promises made, and the state's supposed to be cutting a check.
So...
I mean, it took us probably six months or longer after we found out about the settlement that had been negotiated, to get a copy of it from John's office, and also to get it signed by the county, once we received something from his office, the AG's office. And we got it signed and got back to him within a week, 10 days, something like that, wasn't it, Brian? And after that, we asked for a signed copy from the state, and it took us several months before they finally got a signed copy back to the county of the settlement.
So... Well, just to be clear, you know, this is the first I've heard of it. And the negotiations took place with the state?
With the state, yeah. This is a septic tank system, and all that's, the state is responsible for, not the counties. And all because counties hire the people from the state, the state licenses them, and then they do the inspections and so forth, and if there's blowback on a particular tank or whatever, which is one of the John Nations matters, and the state's supposed to take care of it.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll, let's stay on top of this and get this resolved.
Yeah, quite frankly, I didn't realize that the check had not been cut, because we'd been promised that it was going to be cut. And if you could have contacted me, and we might would have gotten in touch with them, or we would have gotten in touch with them even sooner. I'm glad to know that, glad they have this information, so I can get back in touch with him.
Thank you. All right. We will go to presentations, and I think we're going to have a Zoom presentation here.
For the audit, no?
Cassie, can you hear us? I may need to unmute.
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
Yeah.
Go ahead and share your screen at this time.
She'll talk about our year-ending June 30, 2023 audit.
Are we ready?
Yes, we're ready.
Okay. Thank you so much for having me virtually tonight. Unfortunately, circumstances changed early this morning, and I ended up sick, so I'll try to go through everything and just hit the highlights here for you, as we normally do in the PowerPoint, and if you have any questions at any point, just let us know, and between Robin and I, we can get those answered for you. So, this is the financial statements for 63023. We issued an unmodified opinion. That's a clean audit opinion on the financial statements. Last year, we had implementation of GASB-87, and this year, we had implementation of GASB-96. And that is related to subscriptions and how that liability is shown in the financial We did not have, in the single audit, any reports on material weaknesses for the audit programs that we tested. Now, this is information on the general fund summary, and this shows you your revenues and expenditures from 2022 to 2023. As you can see, you had an increase in both revenues and expenditures. So, this increase in revenue gave your fund balance and the general fund a significant increase there of over $4 million. So, you can see, for you, we present it over the four-year period, and you can see that upward trend that you've had since 2021. You know, what the local government commission, the LGC, looks at is what your available fund balance is in the general fund. And so, this is that calculation that they use to compare you with other units in your peer group, and that peer group is now based on general fund expenditures instead of population as it was a few years ago. So, you can see what your available fund balance was for 2022, and that increase in your revenues and your overall fund balance increase did allow for the available fund balance to increase over $4 million for 63023. Now, what we're looking at here is your trend with your fund balance that's available, as well as the net expenditures, and what the LGC looks at, your percentage of fund balance available compared to your net expenditures for the general fund. And you can see that you had an increase in that percentage from 2022 to 2023. So, that's always a positive reflection that the LGC likes to see when they're looking at your fund balance in the general fund. General fund revenues here, this is what we look at when we're looking at what your top revenues were. And so, of course, property taxes, your ad valorem taxes, those continue to be the highest amount of revenue source for the county. Then you have your intergovernmental, which increased from the prior year as well, and that increase, that is federal and state grants. And then you had a slight increase for your charges for services in the general fund. Now, when we look at the major general fund expenditures, your public safety, your education, and human services continues to be the top three functions of expenditures that the county has. And so, you can see that public safety had an increase, and then your education also had a slight increase there, and then your human services had an increase, and that is directly related to those revenues that you received for federal and state grants that we saw on the previous slide. Now, just to touch on what the enterprise funds showed for 63023, you will see on this slide the operating revenues, operating expenses, and then the revenues that were over or under the expenditures. So, you can see that, although the water and sewer fund did have that revenues in excess of expenditures, the solid waste fund did not. And that's just for operating expenses. Now, when we look at the cash flow information of operations for these two funds, and then we look at the unrestricted net position, you can see that impact. This is 2022 compared to 2023. So, unrestricted net position did have an increase in the water and sewer fund, although your cash flow from operations did decrease. Now, what the LGC requires now is if there are any performance indicators within the financial statements, once we put in the information and submit the report to them with their data input sheet, if there are any performance indicators, Robin has to prepare a response to the local government commission, and you have to approve that, and then that has to be submitted to the LGC within 90 days of this presentation. So, we did have a restatement, and that was just related to the CIP, and so you'll see that information within the financial statements, and that was corrected there, happened in the prior year, and it was corrected immediately in the current year. Do you have any questions, comments on the presentation or the audit for 63023?
Any questions?
Fund balance is a lot better, so that's great.
Yes, we are making steps to improve our percentage, and the percentage that she showed for 2023 is above 20%, I think is the threshold for those, the peers that we have. So, we're getting, you know, we're working our way back to the 25%, so that's definitely good news.
That is good news. Other questions or comments? And Robin, you're going to give us the draft of that letter?
Yes, I will. I have a draft of the letter that I plan to email each of the board members, to, you know, let you review it, and let me know if you have any comments. And as she says, we have a little bit, you know, passed today to do that, but, you know, while it's on our minds, I'd like to get that, you know, box checked off and taken care of, so.
Sure.
Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say that none of this has happened by accident. It's been by the efforts of this board and the administration of the county that we're being able to come back like we are. I certainly appreciate that from everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Okay. Next, we have Macy Smith, that's going to talk to us about her Girl Scout Gold Award project. And Macy, would you tell us who your guests are here with you tonight?
I sure will. So, my name's Macy Smith, for those of you who don't know me, and with me, I have my family. So, I have my mom, many of you, thank you, might know her. She's Kelly Funderburke, she's the Register of Deeds, and then my stepdad Roger, and my little brother Ben, and then to the left of my mom is my dad, Dusty Smith. So, tonight, I'm just going to share a little bit about the project I just completed across the street at the courthouse. So, a little bit about me, I've lived here my whole life. I'm a senior at Davie this year, but I also, I do dual enrollment at DDCC, so I'm going to graduate with my Associate's Degree in the spring. I'm really active in the community. I have multiple clubs, organizations, all of that stuff. You can find me working at Ketchy Creek or Bermuda Runtown Hall, either one of those throughout the week. So, that's a little bit about me. So, what is a gold award? It's equivalent to the Eagle Scout and Boy Scouts. It's not as well-known as the Eagle Scout, but it is equivalent. So, the goal was to provide a real, lasting, and sustainable change in the community. So, what I had to do before this was earn a bronze and silver award, and I had to complete a journey. So, it's a series of badges, service projects, all of that. So, I developed a step-by-step project. It included interviews, building and leading a team, creating a budget, securing financials, and then implementing the project itself. So, my project, I entitled it "A Matrimonial Makeover." So, with the help of Jason Lawrence, I learned that there was a courtyard space across the street that was not being utilized, and it had become very overgrown. Previously, it was used for taking pictures after the magistrates performed civil ceremonies, but unfortunately, it had fell to wayside in recent years. So, I spoke with Jason Lawrence, I spoke with Brian Barnett and Brad Blackwalter, and together, we came up with a plan. My project's goal was to reach a unique target audience of individuals, being those that choose to have Civil Union weddings versus traditional religious wedding ceremonies. So, these are actually very common ceremonies in our community. So, hopefully, this newly renovated space will allow individuals to feel welcomed and supported by all of us as a community. So, if you're wondering how I funded it, I got a grant from Davie Respect Initiative. This is the second grant that I've won from them. So, luckily, the grant was able to cover a majority of the costs, so the project itself cost $1,200. A thousand of it came from Davie Respect, and the remaining 200 came from my troop funding. So, this is the previous space, so this is what it looked like before, and then I'll just walk you guys through a little bit of how I transformed it. So, I had lots and lots of help. So, first, this is my grandfather in the top-left picture. Couldn't have done the project without him, so we built a lot of things. Here's the shutters. We actually used old doors that he had from Ms. Hall's house. She was an old Davie County resident. So, we were using our resources wisely. We kind of built some things, and then we stained them all. So, there's my mom, she helped me stain them, and then the bench in the picture, and then we pressure washed, thanks to stepdad Roger, and then flower arranging, that's my grandmother and my little brother Ben. So, I chose to do artificial flowers for sustainability purposes, so it's easy to sustain. And then we installed it last two weekends ago. So, we put, we bolted everything to the ground, we hung up shutters, the flower boxes, the artificial turf wall, and this is what it looks like today. So, it's a lot transformed. Here's some closer-up pictures. But that's my project, so I encourage you all to go across the street and check it out if you haven't, and encourage people to use it. Does anyone have any questions?
It's beautiful. I tell you, we toured the courthouse not long ago, pre-project.
Oh, really?
And it definitely needed it, right, Jason? Oh, wow. Thank you.
You did a great job. Of course. Well, I thank you guys and encourage everyone to go use it. That's the goal.
Are you for her?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll bring Robin back up.
Good evening again.
Tonight, I'm going to talk about the November financial summary, and this is comparing November year-to-date, so July through November of 2023 versus July through November of 2022, last fiscal year. As you can see here, we're about $1.1 million of revenue versus what we had last year. This is mostly due to the timing of tax collections. You can see property taxes are about, also, $1.1, a little bit more versus last year. And expenditures, we've spent about $1.8 million more, mostly due to the timing of contributions to the other funds. You can see in general government and public safety where we moved the fire funding out to another fund. Everything else is pretty much comparable to where we were last year. Just to give you a frame of reference, this year, our November year-to-date revenues are 40.88% of our estimates, compared to 39.5% of last year. And expenditures are about 36% of the budget versus 42%, which is about five months' worth of estimates. Does anybody have any questions?
Any questions, comments? All right. Thanks, Robin. Appreciate all the hard work you guys are putting in.
Sure.
Okay. County manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions, comments? All right, thanks, Robin. Appreciate all the hard work you guys are putting in. Okay, county manager.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, Happy New Year. Second, I want to thank Macy for her project. Um, I think we started this back in the summer, um, and Macy was one of the folks that was part of our trip to Denver as part of All American City. So I knew when she approached us about this project, I knew the end result was going to be fantastic. So thank you, um, for all the work you put in on that, um, and thanks for presenting tonight. I think it's important for our younger folks to, um, have an opportunity to present to you all, especially when they're doing something positive in the community. Um, I want to report that a couple months ago, we talked about a collaboration between the library and senior services, where senior services had donated, um, a series of computers to create a new computer lab at the library, and I want to report that it's up and running. Uh, we now have eleven new computers for, uh, additional computer lab that's open to the public that they can use at the library. Um, as part of recreation, I want to remind everybody that tickets are still available for the upcoming Daddy Daughter Dance, uh, taking place on February twenty-fourth. Um, tickets will be available until February twelfth, um, so you bear to get them while you can, and this year's theme is Under the Sea. If you have a smartphone, you can now download the Sheriff's Office's, uh, mobile app. It's available on the Google Play Store and Apple, uh, App Store as well. It's a great place to get updates and information that the Sheriff's Office is pushing out, um, about public safety. And then finally, on January the twenty-third, just want to let the community know that we will have a budget retreat to discuss the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Um, it's that time of year again. It will take place at the Meven Education Center, which is next to the community park, uh, used to be the old, uh, K Building. Uh, it starts at eight o'clock and goes till four, and that's all I have.
Any questions for Mr. Barnett? Any comments? All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, any, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
Miss Finney makes that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schof, second. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor, uplifted hand? It's unanimous? All right. Uh, any old business? All right, under new business, acquisition of real property. Mr. Barnett?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, um, as part of, uh, new business, we have the acquisition of property. We're, uh, I know when I first came here, we've had several conversations about looking at purchasing a piece of property for potentially putting an agricultural center here in Davie County. As much as agriculture is a big, uh, part of the community here, we thought that, uh, this is something that has been championed for several years, and we have had an opportunity to purchase a piece of property, uh, on Main Church Road that we feel would be, um, a great asset as we move forward. And as part of the next step of, of trying to raise funds to actually build a center, um, we are looking at using some of our dedicated appropriated fund balance to pay for this, so there's no additional cost, um, to move forward. Um, the next step would be to get with our county attorney, uh, to schedule a time to do the real estate closing here in the future.
Okay. All right, do, uh, do we have any questions? Any comments? Okay, well, this is, um, this is definitely something we've been talking about for many, many years, and, uh, uh, it's a, it's a wonderful piece of property and a, a win for our agricultural community, our kids that, uh, and, um, and for the county as a whole. So, uh, glad to do this. Do I have a motion? Uh, do, do I have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve.
All right, Miss Finney makes the motion. Richard, you want a second? Richard's, Richard, Mr. Poindexter, seconds. Any other discussion or comment?
We want to talk about the particulars of it, um, as far as the, it's on Main Church Road and the acreage, or, or, Brian, would you like to say anything about that?
Sure, it's a seventy, it's sixty-five acres off Main Church Road as you approach, uh, if you come up from, um, Highway one-fifty-eight towards, uh, Interstate forty, it's just above, uh, South Angel Road. Um, the site, uh, right now is currently being farmed. It's a combination of farmland and woodland. We also think the site has potential for some other county uses in the future beyond just an agricultural center. Um, so is there anything else?
Very accessible to I forty-two, yeah.
Beautiful piece of property.
Yeah, absolutely.
It is.
It is beautiful, and one of the things, Macy, when we were looking at it, one of the ideas that were in our head was it would be a great place for scouts to do some projects. So you can, you can share that with people coming along behind you that may be looking for something wonderful to do that will affect the whole county. We may have something for them to do.
Absolutely. All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, uplifted hand? All right, we're unanimous on that. Okay, um, Commissioner's comments, uh, Ms. Schof?
I'd like to congratulate Macy on her project, and, um, maybe I can get her out to my house to do some work. So it looked really good. I'd like to, uh, thank everybody for coming out. I'd like to comment on the, uh, purchase of the land just a little bit further is that there's so much potential with this piece of property, and hopefully, you know, there's going to be possibilities to use for walking trails, park-like features. There's some nice, uh, wooded areas with incline and elevation changes in addition to just the site that can be used for buildings or arenas or whatever that might be. And, uh, we're just kind of glad that this sort of fell into our lap and has worked out the way it has. Thank you.
Mr. Poindexter?
Also would like to say congratulations to Macy on her accomplishments, and, uh, thank all, everybody for coming out tonight, even those that had to leave early, and it's always good to look out and see concerned faces in the crowd. Uh, thank you to all the county employees that worked so hard. I know I see the, uh, guys that have to do the water repairs on the side of the road and this cold, cold weather, uh, down in the water working. But, uh, anyway, thank you to all of you, and, uh, have a Happy New Year.
Mr. Renninger?
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and, um, thanks for coming out this evening. Um, Macy, your project, that's very nice. I was at the courthouse this morning doing my civic duty as a juror, and, um, and I see Mr. Lawrence there, so I'm on, I'm on, gently suggest that, uh, if the capital budget would stand it, we might put some padding on those pews upstairs. So, uh, yeah, anyway, but, um, the process was very smooth and, uh, appreciate that. But, uh, anyway, looking forward to a great twenty-twenty-four and, uh, hope to see you next month. Thank you.
Miss Finney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Macy, I'm gonna again say thank you. I most of all appreciate that you chose an unusual project that's a little bit different, and I think it was a great idea, and I think it looks really good, so thank you for doing that. And I know both of your parents and Roger are proud of you, so, and I know Jason's tickled to have that, um, in his building and for people to use. The riddles have left, but I thank Jennifer for coming and bringing that to our attention so that we can try to help her move forward on that. I want to share something a little different with you tonight because all through December, I just watched a lot of blessings roll in this county, but just before the holiday season and in November, there was a hunger and homelessness event in Kulami, and it was one of the most touching events that we've had here in a long time. Our providers were sharing people that they had come in contact with that needed help, um, that were struggling, that, um, were homeless or were just hungry, and I was so proud that we had so many county employees there participating. Suzanne and some of her staff were there. We had multiple churches that were there, but all of these providers shared their stories of what they were doing and were able to connect and to have a conversation about what they could do next. I think it was surprising, and Commissioner Renninger was there too, we heard some surprising stories, um, that were, um, that were unexpected for us to hear about things going on in our county. And it brings it back to my attention tonight because with this weather coming in, people that are truly homeless tonight, they're, they're facing an obstacle. So, and, um, our emergency service personnel may be facing an obstacle if they have to go help them. So that's, just keep them in your prayers tonight and, um, think about what you can do, and as I said in December, look around and see what you can do for your fellow man. We had a lot of neat things happen. I actually had someone who doesn't even live here to contact me and donate some brand-new bicycles for some foster children in our county, and I was so excited, I had to text Suzanne over the weekend, I couldn't even leave her alone, but just unexpected blessings like that seem to pour out over the holiday season, and hopefully, that'll continue into the new year. Um, I do want us to remember, we've had some pretty, um, tough situations happen in the past few weeks with losing people. Just this past Friday, there were two World War II veterans buried in Davie County, and, um, we need to remember their families. Our, our, our World War II veterans are leaving us quickly. And as we proceeded down Main Street last Friday, and people were standing along the roadway, and we, um, got to the armory, and the National Guard were standing at attention at the roadway as we passed with the funeral procession, it was just a very overwhelming event, and, um, we're going to miss these veterans very, very much. Thank you all for coming. I hope everyone has a wonderful new year, and I look forward to us just, just growing and, um, in many ways in Davie County, and just trying to make things better each and every day.
Thank you, Miss Finney. Uh, Macy, I'll make it unanimous. Thank you for your creative project. That, that is beautiful, and it, it really, uh, I wish everybody, what you showed before was actually cleaned up.
Mm-hmm.
You actually cleaned it up before you showed the before. I'm telling you, if you saw it before, you would say, man, you did some kind of job. And, uh, I'll pat your grandfather on the back next time I see him, and your grandmother too. They're, they're great people. We're sorry they couldn't be with us tonight. Folks, thank you for being here. Um, we, uh, we are now going to go into closed session, um, and I will read this, um, paragraph just so we, uh, we're good to go. Closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three-one-eight, point one-one-A, six, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or public or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee. So, um, do I have a motion to go into closed session?
Motion.
Mr. Poindexter, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, we are now in closed session. Thank you for being here, and we'll be back out shortly.
Can you go back into the session?
So moved.
Miss Finney, do I have a second? Mr. Poindexter, all in favor? Motion to adjourn?
Question, question? Uh, 'cause I stepped out to take care of that, and, uh, did y'all vote to approve the sale of the, I mean, purchase of the property? And I will tell you that after the last meeting, as of December the fourth, twenty-twenty-three, everything's clear. I'll do an update on it, obviously. Uh, he'd already paid his taxes and everything, so I mean, everything, I checked judgments over in the clerk's office, checked taxes, uh, everything down in the register deeds office and all, and, uh, but I will do an update on it, and then we'll be ready to close whenever Robin can get some money to, to Brian, I guess. Okay, sounds good.
All right, Richard, you want to repeat that?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Not sure we need you, but.
Second.
Second, all in favor? All right, you stand adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.